You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the January 11th, 2024 Special Meeting of the Michigan City Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to Michigan City Housing Authority Special Meeting. It's January 11th. Sorry for starting late. Can everybody please rise for the pledge? Then we will have a moment of silence. For those who don't know, our executive, our interim executive director, Robert Lane Jr. passed away last week. Ms. Raina, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
My question would be to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, in the name of our Lord and of our justice.
Ms. Bennet, can I get you to do the roll call?
Yes. Talani Raina?
Here.
President. Jacob Mooneyhand?
Present.
Bradine Herney?
Present.
Stacey Benjira?
Robert Looney?
Present.
To the five present, Ms. Herney.
We are at the section now where we will have public comments. Anyone here for public comments? We ask that you introduce yourself, your name and your address, and we will not talk about personnel issues, and we will not answer any questions. You could, you are the director, answers your questions to me, the president. Anyone here for public comment?
So I have a question.
Can you step up to the podium, please? I'm sorry. I forgot all about that. I'm so used to being in the corner.
Good evening. I just have a question.
Put your name, please.
I'm Cheryl Bennet. And I'm coming from Gary, Indiana, getting my little small hat.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I'm Miss Cheryl Bennet. I'm coming from Gary, Indiana, Fort Dix, Illinois, west of the port is my address. And my question is, as he said, the Lord is open to the covenant. I'm here because I heard there was positions open, so do I talk about that now or at the end of the, that's my question.
Oh, okay. Well, just briefly, we, we, there will be applications online, once the new ED come in, and then I believe that's how we're going to move forward. I can't speak for the executive director, because we don't have one at this, at this time, so the jobs will be posted.
So even for the executive director position, that will be posted as well?
That's already posted. That is on our row. You can call down here. They should instruct you on the way to go about the process.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for?
The contract that we've got.
Can you please step up? Yes. Anyone, anyone? Hey, give me one second. Is there another, where's another place we advertise in the ED position?
Faden?
Fada?
I know it's on our row, Indiana row.
And you should be able to call here and get a packet. They should be able to tell you how to go about the process.
My concern was the process and what's going on with the check issue. I know we talked a couple of times, emailed a couple of times, it was just in the air, but we had to freeze right now, and I had to fall back, okay, with my group, and the other units done, but we have a lot of wind distributed out there just basically on the cap.
Hopefully, a lot of this will be addressed today, and it's part of this on the agenda. As I instructed you to write the email to the property manager, myself, and I believe the rest of the board members, I can't remember everybody I told you to address, because I do know you have a concern, and we will make sure that you talk to the attorney, because there is a contract involved, and there is a time period that, that, that you're concerned about, and we are concerned about as well. So we will address that after, after meeting. Yes. Is anyone else here for public comment? Seeing none, move on to the, the approval of the minutes from last meeting, which we got, we don't have those, so we'll table that and move on. Do we receive any communications? Hearing none, we will go on to reports from the attorney.
I'd like to defer my report until the regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you. We are now at new business, and this is a pressing issue. We're going to start off with A, snow removal. I, I took it upon myself to call Mr. Wagner, to have him come here today. He had some issues about the last contract he had. This is an emergency situation, so we will have to get their approval from HUD. We cannot wait no longer. We put this off too long. I would just, Mr. Wagner is here. Can you step up to the podium, sir? If you don't mind? Mr. Rags, I'm going to lean on you a lot on this situation, because I don't want to go over our scope of what we can do, our authority. We need to have a snow removal contract ASAP. We don't, it's snow, it's supposed to snow this week, so.
It's supposed to snow this weekend.
And we don't have nothing in place right now for the tenants. So we are here, and I just want to know what the board's pleasure is. I just will allow him, I'll allow Mr. Wagner to tell you what's his concern, and then we need to have a vote. My vote, and then, then we have this move from there.
I would, okay, so if, if a snow removal contract is going to be entered into by Michigan City Housing Authority, you have to go through the proper procurement channels. Whereas Mr. Wagner can state anything about his business, I would not recommend that the board go forward and vote today, because it needs to be done for so much of the procurement policy. Now, I do understand that there's a concern for snow legal, but the board can always ratify his contract. It can be properly procured through staff, Mr. Wagner, if he is the instance that is procured, can go ahead and do the, can do the snow removal, and the board can ratify those actions later. I would not recommend that the board put the cart before the horse, even though it doesn't seem like it. Because you think, well, no, we have to approve the contract before those actions can go forward. No. Indiana law provides for it. They understand that a void may happen after a day-to-day activity occurs that presents an emergency situation, and the board can ratify it in the future. I would recommend that we have a conversation after the meeting, to see if we can figure out a proper.
Even to extend the contract that's already in place? Can we extend that contract?
Is there, is, was there a contract in place?
There was a contract.
Last year, I plowed on the contract. I was 120 days out, twice that I plowed, and I said I wasn't redoing it, and then I was asked by two different people to take care of it this year, because you guys couldn't find somebody. And I told them, that's fine. It's $200 an hour on an emergency basis. I can't, because I was, I had to hold off so long. I was supposed to be a 15-day note last year, and I wasn't getting paid. I was 120 days.
Excuse me, Mr. Wagner, I don't have the contract in front of me. Do you know the ending date of your contract?
Do I have the contract?
Yes, do you have it, or do you know what the ending date was?
I don't. I don't have it in front of me. I looked it up, and it was, I think it ended in like April. It wasn't even a year contract. It was only a real short contract. It was an emergency last year, too, because nobody plowed.
Right.
And I threw them together, and they said, yeah, let's do it that way, and then I never got, you know, I had to hold my money off, so.
And depending on the amount that was paid last year, you get into, you know, purchase, small purchase, there's different.
I honestly think the whole bill last year was probably 15 or 18 hundred bucks. We didn't plow much last year, because we didn't have a lot of snow. The big problem was, we had, we had one time I was here for four days straight. I couldn't get past, because it just kept snowing.
And what I do, why I have emergency here, because I believe that if we can get past that, if, because HUD should be able to approve if it's an emergency, they give them an emergency, we don't have to go through the whole procurement process, correct?
Depends.
Okay. We'll talk about it afterwards.
Right. There is, just, just for clarity, there, to the chairman's point, there are emergency procurement protocols, but there are certain boxes that have to be ticked before it can be declared a notice.
Okay. We will, we will talk to you after the meeting, so, but I think.
I can get the contract.
Okay.
Even email to me.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion from any board member about the snow removal situation? I mean, we, at this point, I know we will make a recommendation to, to the ED. We don't have a ED right now, so I don't know who we will make the recommendation to. But we will put the recommendation on the record that we want Mr. Wagner to continue the snow removal. That'd just be our recommendation at this, at this time. Any, any discussion? We move on to the resolution non-disclosure agreement. Do we have that prepared?
To the best of my, I, I understand that there was some discussion in reference to a non-disclosure, and that it was some discussion that we had amongst the board in reference to specifically what, what the board was seeking with that non-disclosure. And after the discussion amongst the board, you can see whether or not the procurement policy spoke to it, and if so, then we would understand that, that what the board wanted was already spoken to, and if not, then we would make a recommendation to the board. But my understanding was, there was to be some additional discussion amongst the board when that was set for today.
Well, at this time, I was hoping that it was a resolution here for us to sign. I was under impression, we received an email from HUD. Everybody received an email about PII, personal information, being released?
Yes.
Yes. And I guess that is a serious no-no for, for board and staff. We want to move forward a non-disclosure agreement. I was told by HUD that, that that's something that we need to take care of, and that will be prohibiting us from disclosing information of tenants, contracts, any of that stuff.
Right. As I understand, that's already prohibited under federal regulation, so there would need to be an additional rule from MCHA to prohibit that. That's already prohibited by federal regulation.
Well, I was insured, well, I was requested to make sure that, that, that we have a non-disclosure, so if you feel that there's none there, I guess we should instruct the board that.
If, if, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr..
I would request that, that you forward me that email, so I can speak to the person who sent it, so that that person I can get on the same page.
Okay, we just put this, we'll table this and put it on unfinished business. The interviewing process of the, of the new ED, and we need an update on Gary Housing Authority coming in and helping us run our AC until we find the executive director. If I may, going through you, what is your understanding on what's going on with Gary?
As the board is aware, MCHA is currently without ED, and there are other local housing authorities looking to assist. What I would recommend to the board at this time is to take a vote to allow employees of Gary Housing Authority to come over to MCHA and have assistant staff to make an assessment. As I understand, it is not the housing, the Gary Housing Authorities understanding that they are coming over here to run all of the day-to-day operations, but to run day-to-day operations that, that cannot fall down, to see what safeguards need to be put in place, and what other internal controls need to be put in place to ensure that that doesn't happen. What, what I would recommend, as I said, to the board, is to take a vote on authorizing the housing authority, the Gary Housing Authority, to come over to Michigan City, have access to Michigan City Housing Authority staff, as well as records, to make that assessment. And at that time, after they make their assessment, there will be a second step of the process to then vote to allow the housing authority to do the things that it is, it is recommending from its assessment.
All right. I know we did this before, so I'm going to make a, I will entertain a motion, I will entertain a motion to allow our attorney to start the process and reaching out to an outside agency to help us. That's the first step, because for some reason, they said they, that vote needs to take place, so we need to start off by entertaining that, putting a motion that we all in agreement that we would like outside agency to help us, another housing authority agency, and giving authority to our attorney.
Second.
Mr. Rags on the roll call, please.
Commissioner Raina.
Aye.
Commissioner Mooneyhand.
Aye.
Commissioner Looney.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennet.
Aye.
Chairman McCormick.
Aye.
With five ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Now, that was a long-worded motion you wanted us to do, so.
Mr. Chair, I would recommend that there be a motion to allow Gary Housing Authority access to the staff and records of the Michigan City Housing Authority to do an assessment.
Gary or any other housing authority out, as well?
Gary or any other outside housing authority.
Immediately, immediately.
To immediately have that access.
So move.
Second.
On the roll call, Mr. Rags. Any discussion? I'm sorry, forgive me.
You got to get it done.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Raina.
Aye.
Commissioner Mooneyhand.
Aye.
Commissioner Looney.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennet.
Aye.
Chairman McCormick.
Aye.
With five ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
All right, the interviewing process of the new ED. I know we had one, I know we had one person. The nominating committee, can someone give us the board an update on where we at?
I spoke with Mr. White on Monday, and he assures me he is still interested. He's eager to go on to the next step. There's a little bit of miscommunication, but we need to, we need to, we need to schedule the interview, so as soon as we can.
So what do we need to have, Mr. Rags or Mr. Looney to, in order to get this done? How can we get this, this process started?
If, if the board wishes to interview a possible candidate, or it's an executive session to do that, would you?
Well, it's going to be just three of us for the nominating committee.
Okay.
Can you do that outside of the executive session, or?
Yes, yes. It certainly has to be arranged, if the board has given the committee authorization to do so.
Do we need to, should we do that, or?
Can I interject? At our executive session, my understanding is that Mr. Harris was going to reach out to the prospective candidate, so that he.
Ms. Bennet, point of order. What we said in the executive session is what's, was said in the executive session. So can you reword what you're saying?
Forgive me. My understanding is that Mr. Harris will reach out and make the appropriate contacts to coordinate with some of the things that were said in the executive sessions.
Okay. If it turned me into a statement on me, I can excuse me, I wasn't in that exact. So I was just going to speak to the process generally, but what I would do is I would circle around with Attorney Harris and ensure that, that he gets back in contact with you on where he is in that process.
Um, nominating committee, I would, I want us to move forward ASAP. We cannot go one more week, one more day, without leadership in this authority.
Right.
It is absent minded, it is, it cannot happen. I, I want to hear a discussion, I mean, I will open forward the discussion amongst us. There's no way we can continue to move forward like this. No way.
So I would like to say I'm in total agreement. We, we need to get on this ASAP. With that being said, still, Attorney Harris, in order for us to do what we're trying to do with this potential candidate, without disclosing the stuff from the executive session, there's two stipulations, and you all are aware of that, that needs to be coordinated. If that is not going to be a problem with the coordination, then we can do our part, and then the other part can be done later with the other situation.
Is it a pleasure of the nominating committee to do, to start the interview process sometime next week, or as soon as possible?
Yeah, as soon as possible.
Can you give us a couple of days next week? We know Monday is dead, it's over, we can't do Monday, so this has to take place. Can we just, you guys, you know, three, you need to write that down. We need to get, we need to get this started. Not, not even understanding that this might not be the person, or it may be the person.
Right.
We're not going to be in a rush and make a bad decision, so I don't want to feel that way, but we have to, we have to address this issue.
So I would say that the nominating committee, after this meeting, gets together and comes up with two or three dates, and then coordinates that with our candidate.
Right. That would make the most sense.
Okay. Everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
And then, while we hear on section C, someone, can you, someone read the email. We have three, we have three outside agency that we can reach out to for help. I do know BDO is one of them, is Nan McKay, what's, does someone have the email? There's three other outside agencies that we can look out for, for help for.
Help for?
ED.
Okay.
As far as interim ED, because we cannot function, we cannot, there's too much, there's too much going on that should not be happening. We need to have an ED in his office.
So I have BDO as one, and then Nan McKay. I don't know if that's a person, or if that's a agent.
That's agency.
Okay. So those are the two that we have to email.
Can you read the contact? Can you share where everybody has the contact information? Nominating committee, I will, it will be the, our pleasure for you to contact them as well, to get some kind of idea, and then reach out to their attorney as well, because we have to have somebody in there.
Okay.
Because we've been, I've been, we, we hear that, we hear that Mr. Harris running the agency, then we're being told that Valari Calhoun is running the agency. I was insured by Bruce Nesrung that they can, that cannot happen, and he has no, he has, that's not, that shouldn't be taking place. I just, we cannot continue to allow these decisions to be made financially, the responsibility of units, vehicles, the whole running of the agency. We got to make a decision, and if we can't put, we can't put it off no longer.
So we'll expedite that with the nominating.
Please. And I'm going to leave that on the pending list. Okay, employee insurance. I want to give everybody an update. I guess you got, Ms. Maney, can you please, can you answer that? Was the insurance paid for?
Yes.
And you know what date, do you know what date it was paid?
It was last week, Monday.
And how was that paid for?
With the company debit card. We have confirmation on the letter, and I think Ms. Brittany sent you an email as well with that information.
Well, I don't know if that information was on there. I just knew it was paid. I just want to make sure the board and the public knows that we took care of all of that, that was an emergency, and that we had to take care of, so I want the board to know that that's what we had to do, and we got it done. Is there any questions in regards to that?
Was that like your annual payment, or was that just a monthly payment? Are we going to look into this again?
That was a, that was a.
Four of the months of December and January, to keep it from lapsing.
Yes.
So it's just a current, so we'll, we'll.
Yes, we cannot let it get to that point again, so.
So when, do we know when February is due?
I don't know specifically the date. Again, Ms. Brittany's not here, she's the one that's taking care of that right now, but I assume just from the date that we made the payment, it was due, I think, the fifth of the month. I'm not 100% sure, but I would assume it's.
Coming up quick. But this month is paid for. We had to pay for that in advance, in order to stop it from lapsing. Is there any other questions? All right, we're going to move on to section E, which is office manager. After speaking with Bruce Nesrung, I don't know who was on the other end of the phone, but I was speaking to Bruce Nesrung. There are several issues, including potential violations of releasing information of tenants and other issues. I have, I have, I have his blessing, and he's all for it, and, and then I was still half, Phil Office is also in favor of this. We need to name an office manager. This office manager will not have the authority to terminate, hire, terminate, hire of anyone, not even in her contracts or none of that. This person will only do the day-to-day operation of opening a door, shutting the door, making sure that people are coming to work. This basic office, she is to report to, she will be reporting to the chair, the HUD, and, and the attorney, to make sure nothing is going wrong.
So this, for the, sorry, forgive me.
Go ahead.
So for the record, this person will basically just maintain and monitor the day-to-day within that agency?
Yes, that's the only thing, that's the only authority we have, we can give her. We cannot, we cannot give that person no other authority at this time.
So if an employee wants to call off, or?
They will report to her, they will report to that person, and, and then that person will write that down and note it. Right now, I don't think we have no actual way to determine who's coming in, who's leaving. This, this has to take place.
Is there remote, is there working opportunities or authorization for employees to work remotely?
From what I understand, what I was told, that that should not be taking place, but let's just get to this point where we just name office manager, and that way we can have, we can keep track of that. I'm not, I don't hear, I'm not here. I don't, I don't, that, I don't.
Just asking.
So I don't know. Any other question?
Is it a temporary position, or?
Very temporary. To, that person needs to stay in place until we get an ED. I can't emphasize enough, we got to get an ED now.
I, I would like to suggest Ms. Blanche Meriwether, I know that she has the most seniority here, she's been well-rounded in the agency, so at this point, I would like to recommend Blanche Meriwether.
Well, may I hold that for a second? I will entertain a motion, if it's the board's pleasure, to, first of all, name office manager, with the very limited roles that we discussed.
So move.
Second.
On the roll call, Mr. Rags.
Commissioner Raina.
Aye.
Commissioner Mooneyhand.
Aye.
Commissioner Looney.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennet.
Aye.
Chairman McCormick.
Aye.
With five ayes and zero nays, motion carries.
Now, will that, enter that motion you have on the table?
So I would like to suggest or recommend Ms. Blanche Meriwether for, as the temporary office manager, to conduct the day-to-day, and to be the go-to and maintain the day-to-days of this agency.
Okay.
And again, I will make sure she is not the hire-fired of anyone. She will not have that power whatsoever. She will just, she will keep a record, maintain a record, and, and report as, as according to the, the board, the HUD, and the attorney.
But she is the go-to for the other employees?
Yes, and, and I will instruct that, that person will make sure you know this, this person at this time, according to Mr. Nesrung, that we will make that person the second signee of the checks as well. So that's, that person will have that authority to sign the checks. That way, we can get the vendors paid for. Mr. Nesrung told me that, that's what he wants, and I am in agreements with that. But what he wants is not his decision, it's this board's decision. So I bring that before you, so are you still holding?
Yes, I totally agree with that.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Is she willing to accept the extra responsibility, sir?
Well, no, I was going to say, prior to voting, the nominations need to be closed, so if there's any other nominations that need to be made prior to the closing nominations, and then you vote for the nomination.
Okay. Is there any other nomination? Hearing none, I close the nomination at the.
Can I say something? Is there any way that, since we were not aware of their potential new office manager, and is there any way that we can nominate ourselves?
No.
No?
This is a board decision, and we're moving with that authority. The nomination was also given, the, the, this agenda went out, this agenda was prepared some days ago, and they knew that this was going to be on there. I'm just going to move with this. We closing nomination at this time, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second on the floor. Maybe we have a roll call on this, please.
Commissioner Raina.
Aye.
Commissioner Mooneyhand.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennet.
Aye.
Chairman McCormick.
Aye.
With five ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Someone had a question.
Can you step up to the podium, please?
I have a question, so it's just going to be day-to-day basis as you do, because she can't ask any questions on my part.
She's not going to ask no one no questions. That's not, that was not, that was not even discussed.
I'm saying that even if a tenant needs to ask her a question, she can't answer it, period, because of the confidentiality interest. I see, you know, my part.
You will continue to do your job, no one will interfere with you doing your job. We are at section F, the usage of. We are at section F, the usage of MCHA vehicle. Um, the reason why I put this on the agenda, our last meeting, we discussed this. We were told and, and Mr. Lane last was, um, he also was informed and he knew that we did not want, um, our vehicles going home. Uh, the, the, the vehicles that's here, which is two. We have two vehicles. One of them is the executive director vehicle and then another one is for the staff to go while they're at work, to go to any outside locations here. Um, I was under impression that that vehicle was not gonna be used to take home no more. That vehicle was used. Um, I would like to know for the record, and I will put this request in writing, who authorized that vehicle to be driven after this board said no? These are the backlashes we have when we don't have someone in place to run our agency. People are taking it upon themselves to do things or act on behalf of this board that is totally inappropriate and is wrong. With that being said, I would like to make a motion. I would entertain a motion that any vehicle belong to MCHA, this main office, uh, outside of the, outside of the maintenance department. Outside of this maintenance depart-
I'm sorry, um, well, we wanna reissue the keys in regards to the vehicle.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Please, we are, we in the meeting now. We, we, we're making a, a decision here.
Well, we, we issued the keys that was taken, uh, in regards to the vehicles. Mr. Harris was told by Ms. Blanche Meriwether that we, the staff can use the car. And so that's when Mr. Harris gave us the key back for the vehicle to be used.
I'm gonna make this work, I'm gonna make this perfectly clear for the record. Mr. Harris don't run this agency. Um, uh, Bruce Nesrung, Indianapolis don't run this agency. They provide our finances. The board lays the policies and the legislation. And that's what we are doing here now and we, we, we greatly appreciate it. Any questions afterwards, you can talk to us. We'll be open. Right now, we're in a meeting and we wanna move forward. And, um, with that being said, I will entertain a motion that our vehicles do not go, do not be used to go back and forth to home.
So move. Standing.
On the roll call, please.
Commissioner Reina.
Aye.
Commissioner Mooney.
Before I vote, they can, they, the vehicles can still be used.
Correct.
During the day-to-day, eight to four.
Yes, not used to go home.
Okay.
Commissioner Mooney.
I had something else thinking of.
No problem.
Go ahead, you, you, go ahead. Okay.
Commissioner Longley.
Aye.
Commissioner Benny.
Aye.
Chairman McCormick.
Aye.
With five ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
So can you clarify that because it seems like, just for the record, is that okay? To clarify what that means because it seems like-
The motion that we have on-
I'm talking myself.
Yeah, it seems like we're a little-
I just wanna make sure it's not-
The motion that we entertain was the, the, the vehicles will not be, the vehicles that's for here, not the maintenance.
Sure.
The two vehicles that we have here will not be used as take-home vehicles. That's it, that's all.
Are those the two vehicles that are in front?
The block and I don't know what the other one is. The two, the two vehicles, traverse. The two vehicles that we have here.
So they're to always be here after four and before eight?
They can, they cannot be used for take-home vehicles. That's it, that's all.
Okay.
And, and for, uh, and that's it. I'll just leave it at that. Is we all, everybody cleared on that?
Yes.
Okay, uh, G, credit card. Today I, um, I came in, I requested for the credit card to be turned over to me. Um, and that will go along with I, um, um, and I just wanna, um, make sure that I also have the keys to the vehicle and the credit card that was turned over to me by Mr. Rags. Um, I don't know where attorney Rags got it from, but I will be turning those over today. Um, I'm understanding that our credit card is being used to pay bills. Um, it's also the board's responsibility to make sure, just as if I had to sign off on a check, uh, we need to make sure that we know the purchases that being made with this credit card. Um, I'm gonna ask that, uh, the, the finance director or whoever is charged to finance provide this board with a, um, with a 30-day statement from what's all been spent on the credit card. This credit card and these keys was put in my possession when Mr. Lane left, along with a box of other items. Um, I need to make sure that those items are turned over to the new chair. I, I cannot and I will not, um, be responsible for what's going on now. I never authorize, I never authorize anyone to use this credit card or the vehicle. That is a board decision. I never, I'm not in that. I just wanna make sure the record knows that. I had nothing to do with that. So I don't know who authorized them to go bypass the board. It was not me. So the credit card is now in my possession and I would like to say to this board, I think it would be appropriate that we make sure that any spendage of this credit card needs to come before the board. Uh, cause we don't have no ED. We don't have nobody who, who we answer to, who answer to what. I think before we keep letting, I did authorize, forgive me, for the record, I did authorize, um, the insurance to be paid off the credit card. It was my idea because we was running out of ideas and they said we need two signatures. So I went ahead and made that decision. But moving forward, we gotta know, we need to put a limit on this or we need to be, the new chair should be, have the right to know, uh, when this credit card is being used. Ms. Benny.
Um, so the credit card, you, you acknowledged that you gave authority for the insurance to be paid up to date so it wouldn't lapse. Was there any other expenditures? Um, I, I don't know the procedure, but was there any other expenditures that was authorized since Mr. Lane left? Um, part number one. And number two, does the staff have the authority to just go and use the credit card without any type of authorization?
That will be a question for the ED. The ED is not here. I don't wanna get this into a, uh, a situation where we already know we have a problem. And, and I'm trying to, um, we can take reins, we can, we can regain the reins and, uh, if whatever you guys wanna do with the credit card far as the spending of the credit card, I don't wanna stop the, none of us wanna stop the day-to-day functions. That's why I ca- I said we gotta press on getting an ED. Um, it, it should, the pleasure of the board.
I'm just asking because there's no checking balances of anything that took place and we have to be fiscally responsible as board members for this agency. So if we don't know, and I'm not accusing anyone of anything, but you just have to be transparent and open and understand. That's why it is a good idea to get the last 30 days of, of statement of the last 30 days of things that have been purchased because we don't know what's been purchased or not purchased, but we need to be aware of if there are any charges on there or if there are appropriate charges. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Longley, you have something you wanna add?
I don't know, I agree with her that, yeah, we, we need to, I guess, uh, contact the bank and, and get a statement of activity over the last 30 days, just so we know anything from the time Bob Lane left to current. So we know-
We get that taken care of. Do you wanna put a limit on this or, or have approval? Here's the one thing I want everyone here to know. Um, HUD don't run this agency. HUD provides us finance. And they give us insight on making sure that we don't miss, uh, deadlines, but it's not their responsibility to make sure of it. But they have been working in partnership with us to make sure that we can, cause this is a unique situation that we are in right now. So that's why trying to find somebody to come in that has the experience right now. Until we hire an ED, it's gonna have to take place next week for sure. Uh, is there anything you wanna add to it, Mr. Rags? I don't wanna, I'm too retarded on that. I don't wanna use the wrong words here.
Understood. No, there's, there's nothing additional. You haven't stepped out of it.
So it's up to this board. It's-
Should we like create guidelines now on what the appropriate use and who the use of the card would be? Or, um, at this point, no one gets to use the card until we have a, a reason to use it?
I don't think we can do that one. I think that'd be a bad se- we can leave it in pants of the property manager. I, and that will be one of the things I would like, the credit card to be held by the property manager. That way that can be reported. But again, it's up to us. Do y'all wanna put a limit far as any expenditures over 200, 300, $500? Need to come before the next chair or the board? It's, it's up to you guys.
Since we just voted for an office manager to be in place, if there are, or if there is a need for any type of purchase, since we have an office manager in place, can that at least, can that at least go before the property manager so that she can at least have documentation? And if it's a certain amount, then get back to the board? Um, we, we need to have some type of safeguard of authority, in my opinion.
I agree, Mr. Mr. Jacob.
It makes us have the office manager have their responsibility, in my opinion.
And we're talking about Blanche, cause we have two different off, we have office managers. There was Ms. Meriwether. So my, I don't wanna stop the day-to-day function.
Limit though.
Yeah.
After that come to us.
Well, what, well, we, we set a limit on the spinach, um, um, being, you got, and let's come up with something. Let's, that's what we're here for. What do y'all think will be a limit before somebody need to be contacted? And I've, and I say that person will be the executive director or I mean the, the chair or, or the board, through the chair.
Before that limit is set, I'd like to just say that the board already has a, uh, a target limit that's set for something, a pure policy of 10,000.
Um, that would be, if we had, if we have, that sounds good. But we have circumstances now where money's being spent at the wheel with, without the direction of, of a head. So I, we, we wanna make sure that there will be nothing, uh, inappropriate being taken place. Cause like you said, we must be fiscally responsible and we must protect the agency from fraud and waste.
And I wasn't trying to discourage the board from doing that. I'm just saying, I'm just letting the board know where the parameters currently are.
So they're safe to go up to that amount, but we can, as a board, set a minimum limit and-
We can do whatever we wanna do.
Correct. I'm just letting the board know where the parameters are.
So, so I would like to, um, throw out a number, um, that goes in front of the, um, Ms. Meriwether, the office manager. And then if it's over $500 per se, four or $500, then it comes before the board. Because once it gets to that level, we need to know what, what is really, if there's a appliance or something like that. If that's too low, then someone else can suggest something.
I, I think that's too much, but-
Okay.
But, um, I've been, we've been, we've been, I came here when we were in trouble status and we was at zero threshold. We got there because the board did not do the things they should have done to safeguard the agency. Um, I'm all for a dollar to be personally honest until we find the executive director. That's, that's just me. That, that will just make sure that this credit card, that the board is aware of what's going on. Cause we go back into trouble status or we go, or we go into receivership, it's gonna be based on us, the decision we make. So.
So are you saying then if it's a dollar per se, that the office manager, they would go to the office manager for any then, any type of expenditure and then she would contact the chair?
The chairs, I think the chair should be contacted. If, if the chair or the vice chair, whoever's that person, they need to be contacted. I just wanna make sure that we just not letting this credit card go nilly-willy. You see the resistance to even just getting back into the possession of the board? So again, some people might, some people might think it's hypothetical or it's overbore, but HUD puts you at zero threshold. When they put you at zero threshold, any expenditure over $1 must be approved by HUD. They can do it and we can do it as well. But if you wanna, whatever this board agree on doing, I'm, we, let's move forward with doing it. So.
I didn't mean to point you to do that.
It's, it's, it's open for everyone.
So right now, the, uh, the only authorized user, use would be the property manager. So anything has to go through her, correct?
No, well, what we saying with just the property manager, what I was just saying was, say, um, Ms. Manning comes to before and say, hey, we need to go get a, a furnace.
Right.
Um, we need to go get a furnace or we need to go get some drywall. Um, that needs to be paid for, right? But that, that, before that, that'd be, before that happens, one, one of us, this board will need to be notified. That's it. I don't care, the board must be notified. It ain't Mr. Harris' responsibility, it ain't Mr. Rags' responsibility, and it's not HUD's responsibility. It is our responsibility.
Right.
So that's what I was, that's all I'm saying. Cause I'm not interfering with the day-to-day. Whatever they have to keep this agency going, they can do that. But I'm concerned about the physically being responsible for the finance and money just going out the door without nobody knowing. Because we don't have executive, who they, who do they answer to right now?
Right.
And I get-
We've already had issues with finances. That's kind of why we're in the situation we're in now. So we need to make sure that the money-
And for the record, our financial react score, um, before we came in, out of a possibility of 25 points, we received, we received a score of one.
We spelled our name right?
Uh, no, they had the A, they left the A off. But no. No, so what's the punch of the board?
I mean, when you put it like that, um, I, I'm not trying to micromanage it, but I am, I do wanna be-
We have to-
I wanna, yeah, I, I wanna be realistic that we are, we, we do have to be fiscally responsible and we are the ones that are in this position right now. So I'm willing to pull back that recommendation.
So if we did make it a dollar, then-
How about $100?
I, I'm just, whatever it is, we have to hold the card until we approve of it, expense.
This cr- this card is gonna have to go back, that, this card, I'm assuming is gonna have to stay at this agency.
Right.
Um, I don't see it going out of the door. I don't, I feel uncomfortable with that happening. I wouldn't want that responsibility, me personally. And I don't want that, nobody else to bear that burden.
So let me ask you this, as the chair, when there have been, um, purchases and the, is, the purchases goes through the credit card, there's nothing that you would have to do like you would when you sign off on other bills? The, no, nothing comes from the chair as far as, no, it's paid through the-
Let me just say this. As the chair, I have to sign off on the checks. My electronic signature was abused, so I have to physically sign off on the checks. So any expenditure going out the door, I would have to know about it. So again, it's the board's pleasure. Um, if y'all wanna do a dollar, y'all wanna do, whatever you wanna do, let's do it, but the, but this board will have to be notified of it. And the people that's going to take over as officers have to be willing to answer the phone call when it's, when they, when they call.
I, I'd just like to try and bring some clarity. Is the, is the board's pleasure that the board chair is notified? Or is it the board's pleasure that the board chair is, uh, asked to approve? I think that needs to be clarified because I don't, I don't think that's been clarified.
Well, I, I, I just say-
To, we're starting to, to the chair's approval.
I think, because we can't micromanage, so I just wanna, it's, it's, I really love to have the, the chair to be the ultimate approval in this case, if you're gonna have somebody else.
Well, the board has the procurement policy.
Okay.
So, um, the board can, can do that if the board wishes. Now, whether or not that's efficient or not, whether or not-
We don't wanna interfere with the day-to-day.
Operations.
Yeah, we don't wanna do that.
I'm simply just trying to make sure that it's clear for all parties what the actual expectation is.
And I'm hoping that this is not a, a 10-day process. I don't, I'm hoping that we get, we, if we don't even get to the process of hiring an ED, that we reach out to one of these companies and bring somebody in on a temporary basis. Cause this has to take place. We can't keep letting the agency run like this. So I'm just, I'm just here. I, I, I wouldn't want the responsibility, um, and I don't wanna put it on the next person. But anybody has a mo- anybody wanna move for, make a motion?
Well, at this time, you know, we can, we have to start somewhere. So with that being said, um, maybe we can start with $100 and then after that, like we said, we have an office manager that we just nominated or put in place. And that person, after $100, would have to contact yourself or whoever we nominate to come in as a chair.
I'm in agreement. So I second that motion. Any discussion? Anybody wanna add anything, take away from that?
I'd just like to clarify, if, are they reaching out to the chair just to inform the chair? Are they asking the chair for approval?
They're reaching out to-
To notify.
To notify.
Correct. With the, what was the caveat you added to the end of it?
No.
That you can override and say no. Uh, you, but you used a different word. You used a different phrase. The chair or the vice chair, one of the two must be notified immediately. If they can't get in touch with the chair, they need to go to the vice chair. So Mr. Longley, how you, how would you like to word that? Uh, do you wanna add anything or? The way you said it earlier, you said that you was, you okay with it, but if it feel, it sound like it was something that was, you was on, a, a person was uncomfortable with, that, um, you, you could say no and we take it before the board.
Can you remind that?
Sorry. That was at least 30 seconds ago. Yeah, essentially, like I said, we don't wanna micromanage, but if we've got an office manager that can say, okay, this makes sense, let's get this done. They don't have to get our approval or, uh- they don't have to get our approval or acceptance for any expenditures, expenditures up to a hundred dollars. Otherwise, we have to know, and if it's, you know, excess, if it exceeds a hundred dollars, then they're going to get.
They have to notify, they have to notify the board member. And then it would be that board member's decision to say, to move forward. If it's something, question, you bring it to the board.
And I don't know how the agency operates as far as purchasing and all of that. I mean, we have staff here, I don't want to engage all of that. But I would think that it's not a daily thing. I would assume I might be negligent to say it's a daily thing. It's purchases done daily?
No.
Okay, so that's a good thing.
I thought she worked for us.
No, Ms. Bennet, is that safe to say it's not done?
No, there's no purchases made every day.
Okay, so I think that's adorable, in my opinion.
So your motion will be?
That up to a hundred dollars, well, regardless, any purchases made will go to the office manager. Anything over a hundred dollars, the chair would be contacted and given the authority.
No, notify, just be notified.
Notified of a purchase that's going to be pending or being made.
Correct.
That's my motion.
That way, we won't interject with the day-to-day. I second that motion. Any expenditure, any expenditure over a hundred dollars will have to be, the board, the board chair must be notified or vice chair must be notified.
By the office manager.
By the office manager. That's it, that's all.
Okay, all right.
Hey, Mr. Rayna.
Aye.
Commissioner Moodyhan.
Aye.
Commissioner Looney.
Aye.
Mr. Bennet.
Aye.
Chairman McCormick.
Aye.
With five ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
Okay.
And I'm going to go back before I do this last thing. When it comes to these checks, vendors, what do we have to do to get these vendors' checks paid for? I'm assuming that this is going to be taken care of tomorrow since now we have a second signee, from what Mr. Nezrev told me. I want to make a motion that all checks that we owe vendors be immediately, including this board. Because it stifles that we are not, we haven't been paid. So I'm making a motion that all vendors and commissioners' payments be made immediately.
Would be appropriate for the board to manage, or to be getting paid? That would be appropriate?
Well, take the board off of it, the vendors to be paid immediately. Because I don't want to lose, we already got a problem with the contractors. We don't want to lose nothing else. So with that being said, my, that I move that, I will entertain a motion that the, that the finance director get the checks down, get, draw down on the checks and make payment to all vendors that we owe, all past due.
And that's appropriate, right?
That would be appropriate.
Don't get us, don't get me in trouble now.
You're hesitant, Mr. Rags.
I want to make sure that vendors are paid. We got to get them paid.
I do understand, I do understand, so.
I would make a motion to immediately pay all current obligations the agencies incurred up to this point. And since we're going to have a second signature moving forward, we shouldn't have this issue, but we got to get everything current, so.
Second, motion second. Any discussion?
Commissioner Rayna.
Aye.
Commissioner Moodyhan.
Aye.
Commissioner Looney.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennet.
Aye.
Chairman McCormick.
Aye.
With five ayes and zero nays, the motion carries.
All right, thank you. Onto the last, last part of this board agenda. This is board realignment. I'm glad this day has come, but I'm also frustrated with the way this day has come, okay? Because of the friction far as with HUD, the staff, all the people to be, I think it's, the time is now for the election of two new, of new officers. We put, we did, I, we went as far as we can go as a chair and vice chair. We faced a lot of obstacles in our path. And I just want to, I'm hoping that this move will make it better for everybody. And I think this is the best thing, I know this is the best thing on behalf of the authority. It's sad that that we have the problems that we have now. But I'm ready to move on. And we, we need to do this. So I will entertain a motion to have a new election right now of officers.
So move.
I'm a roll call, please.
Commissioner Rayna.
Aye.
Commissioner Moodyhan.
I think I'd rather have all of us here for the election game.
Correct.
Do you already know, Mr., yes? For the record, he already, yes.
Okay, aye.
Commissioner Looney.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennet.
Aye.
Chairman McCormick.
Aye.
Five ayes and zero nays, the election will go forward.
I would like, I will take nominations for the chair.
That's what I said. To do an election of officers, it should have to be vacated. So I'll take, because you're not.
Okay, okay, yeah, all right, go ahead.
I'll take nominations for chairman.
That could come from me as well?
That can come from anyone.
Mr. Looney. Commissioner Looney.
We have a nomination for Commissioner Looney. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Third and final call for nominations. The nominations are now closed. Now the board is to vote on Commissioner Looney taking the chairmanship of the Michigan City Housing Board. With the roll call, Commissioner Rayna.
Aye.
Commissioner Moodyhan.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennet.
Aye.
Commissioner McCormick.
Aye.
And Commissioner Looney.
Aye.
You took my title real quick there.
With five ayes and zero nays, Commissioner Looney is now the chair.
Congratulations. And I'd like to give kudos and accolades to Commissioner McCormick on the job that he did during the time that he did. I felt like he was very efficient. I felt like he was, took the authority, had a great passion for the job, and I think he did a good job. So thanks for your service.
Thank you for getting this, Mr. Ray.
Thank you. We all surprise.
Mr. Chair, I will now take a nomination for new vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Rayna.
I second.
All right.
This is a very important role. Yeah. No, I just said this is a very important role.
Don't talk me down.
Yeah. It's a very important role and I just want you to just understand, don't let no one come between you guys. And the training that you guys had, I know you're going to do a great job.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Third call, are there any other nominations for vice chair? Mr. Rags, could you do the?
Commissioner Rayna.
Aye.
Mr. Moodyhan.
Aye.
Mr. McCormick.
Aye.
Mr. Bennet.
Aye.
Chairman Looney.
Aye.
With five ayes and zero nays, the nomination carries.
Take your seat. Queen.
Mr. Chair, if I can have one second. I will turn over the keys, the credit card. And we will go into the office and I will give you the box that was left so that we can physically inspect it, we can leave it in there. And you can have it as you wish. But the credit card and the keys are officially yours.
Thank you.
And that's for the line, right?
Right. Always, that's my understanding. Since that's the last thing on the agenda, I'll take any motions.
You have to.
I think we need to.
Oh, sorry. That's the last thing on the agenda?
Mr. Blitman, as the chair, I think we need to approve the regular scheduled meeting, schedule that's already been put out.